All right, let's go ahead and get started. I call the meeting to order if we can please call the roll.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Albritton.
President.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. If you please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We are truly blessed in our town to have wide variety of cultures and opinions and wide variety of everything. We are truly a diverse community and it only makes us stronger. It only gives us more of an appreciation of what everybody uniquely can bring to our community and improve our community. And so this evening, I'm pleased Raj, thank you for specifically requesting this. We had this commemoration last year and it's so special. We're happy to do it each and every year. So, thank you for bringing this up and appreciate it. So, we'd like to read the proclamation for Diwali.
Whereas Sanatana Dharma, commonly known as Hinduism, in one of the most ancient religions of the world that originated in India, and whereas Hinduism is the third-largest religion in the world with more than 1 billion followers worldwide representing 15 percent of the global population, and whereas approximately 4 million Hindus call United States as their home, including several thousand in Broward County and its municipalities, and whereas the Hindus celebrate numerous festivals throughout the year, but many during the months of October or November culminating in the celebration of Diwali, whereas the Hindus worldwide reverently observe the festival of Diwali, celebrating the victory of good over evil and bringing light in the form of knowledge, serenity, hope, and universal well-being, and whereas Diwali falls on Sunday, November 12th this year in accordance with the lunar calendar and brings together families, friends, and communities here in the U.S. and around the globe promoting goodwill, peace, prosperity, and a shared sense of oneness, and whereas the U.S. Congress had officially passed unanimous resolutions recognizing the religious and historical significance of Diwali, whereas Diwali is one of the most celebrated festivals of great significance to the Hindus, the Sikhs, the Jains, and Buddhists, and whereas for Sikhs, Diwali is celebrated as Mandi Char Diva, or the day of the sixth Sikh guru, Guru Hargobind, helped release 52 kings held in captivity by the Mughal emperor in an unparalleled testimony of shared sense of oneness, whereas for Jains, Diwali marks the anniversary of the attainment of Moksha, or liberation, by Mahavira, the last great teacher of the Jain Dharma, and whereas for Navar Buddhists, Diwali is commemorated as the day of the great Emperor Ashoka embraced Buddhism as his faith, and whereas consistent with American values, Diwali signifies a special time of peace and serenity with the hope of building bridges, of understanding and tearing down barriers of intolerance, and whereas the town of Southwest Ranches has notably benefited from the Indian-American and South Asian communities throughout the great family values they bring along with the commitment to tolerance, pluralism, inclusiveness, environmental consciousness, and continued excellence in science, medicine, technology, music, dances, yoga, and meditation. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, does hereby recognize the significance of the Hindu Heritage Month and the Festival of Diwali with this message of tolerance, compassion, and the victory of good over evil, which resonates with the American spirit, and be it further resolved that the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida proudly expresses its deepest respect for Indian-Americans and South Asian-Americans throughout the world and here in the town of Southwest Ranches community, and all those who celebrate the Hindu Heritage Month in October and Festival of Diwali on November 12th, 2023, and likewise encourages all the people of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida to join us in recognizing the contributions of all Hindus, Sikhs, Jains, and Buddhists active in all aspects of our vibrant economy and civic society.
Great, thank you, Debra. Raj, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Town Council, Town Manager, Town Attorney, I know he's not here today, but Mr. David is substituting for him, the city staff. Good evening, namaste, and satyriakal. On behalf of our Hindu, Sikh, Jain, and Buddhist brethren, it's a great honor to accept tonight's Hindu Heritage Month and Diwali proclamation. I thank the town's leadership for bestowing this distinction on us. We have tonight some members of our community, and if you give me a minute, let me introduce, and I apologize if I miss somebody. So, we have from the Shiva Vishnu Temple, the President, Dr. Elmelu.
Chiru.
Okay, I'm sorry, I said that. I messed something up. Then we have Mr. Shekhar Reddy. He is the President of our Hindu-American Political Action Committee. Then we have Prime Mayor Puri. He is the President of Indian Religious Community Center, and these people would be holding a very big Diwali event. I think it is on the 18th of November at Broward Convention Center, and that is attended by thousands of people. And then we have Ms. Suda Agarwal, he's the wife of our Dr. Piyush Agarwal. Then we have Ms. Kasum Sharma, and then my wife, Usha. And then we have Dilip Narasimhan. He represents the South Florida Hindu Temple. And then we have Mr. Sharma, whose wife I was just about to mispronounce, so I apologize. And then we have Mr. Bhasin again from the South Florida Hindu Temple. So, we have a good row, we just could not, and I believe that, I am, Dr. Piyush Agarwal again, you know, as I said, you know, I'll probably miss somebody and get in trouble. So, and then we had a notification last minute, you know, Debra had said that, you know, we could not have the Sikh representation, but nonetheless, you know, they are included here. The Hindu Sikhs, Jains, and Buddhists in India celebrate no less than 40 different festivals throughout the year, with at least 12 during the month of October. Due to this reason, October has been designated as the Hindu Heritage Month. Because of the lunar calendar, Diwali this year will fall on November 12th. We accept tonight's proclamation with somber feeling as our hearts go out to the victims of the October 7th terrorist attack in Israel. If a political solution is going to be forced by blatant act of terrorism, it would be the end of our civilization. As Hindus who have suffered centuries of brutal invasion and ceded thousands of square miles stretching from Indonesia to Afghanistan, we have still learned to live and flourish with people of all faiths seeking no one's destruction. Against this backdrop, on the occasion of Diwali, we bring tonight a message of tearing down the barriers of intolerance, building bridges, peace, and oneness as it is mentioned in the proclamation. Finally, and in the wake of what's happening in the Middle East, we are requesting Southwest Ranches leadership to please continue to raise the awareness amongst your law enforcement personnel for suspicious activities around all areas of worship. It is important that we remain vigilant, and last night when we heard what happened at the NSU campus was really heartbreaking. So, thank you again as we extend the greetings of Diwali into Hanukkah and Christmas for all. Thank you again.
Great, thank you, thank you. And thank you again for all that you do throughout the entire year. Just wonderful partners, and we just appreciate so much all that you do. We do have some proclamations, maybe we can come out front and take a couple of pictures, and would that be okay? Great, let's do that.
Camera. Want to use my phone?
He's moving the photo. I'll take the photos. No, I'll do it, I got it. I'll get my phone. I'll take the photos. It's going to help me.
Happy Diwali. Happy Diwali. Thank you. Happy Diwali. And it's a little early, it's two weeks from now, but still. Yep, yep, yep. Best of all. I go home with my entire team. So, I usually see you Diwali. Happy Diwali. Nothing more to be done. Nothing more to be done.
We'll hold you down. You're like roping a camel.
That's what it would take.
Wild steering.
All right. Truly a wonderful event. All right, public comment. We have any public comment this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker, Rick Cormier.
Oh, forgot to turn it in. Hey, how's it going? Good evening. I, Rick Cormier, 210 Terrace. I came in last Town Council meeting. Tonight I just wanted to share my apologies. I said some things that were out of character of myself that could potentially tarnish a person's reputation that has lived in this town for 20-plus years, Ron Martinez on 210 Terrace, and said some things that weren't factual, accused him of being something and calling him a name. I just wanted to stand up today and formally apologize to the town and to the council, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Really appreciate you doing that. Next speaker.
John Garrati.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I forget sometimes, but last night was, first of all, it's John Garrati from 162nd Avenue. Last night was our first Green Meadows Civic Association/Midtown Ranches, we're kind of name confused right now, but we had our first get-together and it was a pretty big success. So, for everybody that came out that's watching us on YouTube, you guys were invited, but you know, we had prior engagements, this, that, and the other, it happens, more than welcome to show up next time, but we had a nice turnout. A lot of neighbors that have never met each other came out, different diversities, different crowds, it was really cool. I'd like to thank Lazaro, the owner of the Crazy Crab. He also lives in Sunshine Ranches. David Kaczynski is his council member, he's been there for a few years. Very nice restaurant, very nice host. He's very open, he didn't know anything about the incinerators until we brought it on, you know, we spoke about it and had the group there, and Debbie came out and represented her civic association, you know, kind of getting the neighbors together. It was spur of the moment, it was, but we want to continue to do it because that message is strong and our residents are friendly neighbors, and that's really what I wanted to come up here and say this evening, and you know, it was a very nice evening. So, thank you guys, whoever's watching, whoever comes out, we're going to be doing them more often, and hopefully you guys will show up next time. Thank you.
No further speakers, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Any board reports this evening?
Debbie Green. So, I'm just going to speak on behalf of the Zero Waste Broward Task Force. I attended the meeting last night. It was very nice, it was a lot of fun, and it was, but it's just, it just proves the point that no, like, this incinerator and the possibility of it being right here and adjacent to us, and not just here, but anywhere, but it's just, it's been a hot topic and talked about a lot at these meetings and some community meetings for at least the last few months, and the amount of people that still have no clue that this potentially is coming that will destroy our whole, our lifestyles.
Yeah.
Our homes, our health, our everything. And it's, so, I'm just going to reach out once again to anyone else that's out there listening, that, you know, we're in very real danger of an incinerator possibly being built as a recycling method to reach the state's 75 percent recycling mandate. There's a piece of property that is right adjacent to Southwest Ranches off of US-27 and Sheridan Street. There's a new board that's been formed, it's the Solid Waste, it's a long name, but it's a new board that's been formed that's to come up with a master plan of, that will take the direction of solid waste for the next 40 or so years. So, on this board, there's 28 cities, each has a delegate and one from Broward County. We're lucky enough, we have, the mayor is an alternate for the small cities category, and he's on that executive committee. So, it's just, it's important just to get the word out of the incinerator. We need to urge everybody on that executive committee and everybody that sits on that, the board, that this is, that incinerators are not the way of the future, that we need to move towards other zero-waste options. So, there is, we have the grassroots effort and the email that we have for that, so anybody that has an interest, maybe you can't, you know, you can't get out there and canvass or do this, but maybe you can, maybe there's several different committees that maybe you can help on, but if you can email to zerowastbrowardtf@gmail.com, and Debra's kind enough to put it up there, so if you can see it on the screen, that way you can back it up and you can get the email address. And then there's a Facebook group, Broward Clean Air, that has a tremendous amount of information, whether it's, you know, just tons of education. So, we just need for everybody, if all of us can reach out to all of our friends, our neighbors, our coworkers, our, the people at the schools, at the PTAs, at our churches, at the synagogue, wherever it is, if we all just reach out to our small world of people, we will amass a huge voice, which is what we need to fight against this going in the wrong direction, because it does seem there's a lot, you know, like, a lot of things, it's all about the money, and we need to get this board to do what's right for not only Southwest Ranches, but for the county, for the state, and just all mankind, humankind, going forward. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Debbie. Appreciate all your work on that. Any other board reports? Seeing none, council member comments?
Okay.
All right, awesome.
Start us off. Just a couple of, and I'll be brief. Thank you, everybody, for coming. How many we got in YouTube land? Nine, outstanding, same nine as last.
Yeah, that's good.
It's getting bigger.
Yeah.
Okay, good, glad to hear that. Just a couple items of note. First, I'd like to address something one of the speakers mentioned about the civic association meetings, where some of us were not able, unfortunately, there's a timing issue, and I want to make sure everybody understands it, we can't be in two places at once, and when they're, the HOAs would be great if they could talk to one another and not schedule themselves on the same night, because now we've got to pick and choose and flip a coin. So, that was, then that was last night's case.
Exactly.
You know, or something like that. So, there was no disrespect meant, or if we didn't come or anything, it's just we have to make a choice, as to which one do we attend, you know, at that point. So, I just wanted to throw that out there first. Ms. Green, correct me if I'm wrong, the next Zero Waste Task Force meeting is November 8th here at 7:00 PM? Okay. That question was asked of me earlier and I had no clue, but then I saw out of my notes, so, all right, very good. We have this weekend, Halloween at the barn on the 28th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. We close the parking lot off, the semicircle at 6:00 PM for the safety. I was at the barn today, it's well-decorated, let's just say, there's a lot of stuff going on right now, and it should be a really successful, we just hope the weather holds, you know, we've got some great weather here the last three days, so we just hope that holds. Our next hazmat is going to be at the barn on the 6th of January, from like 10:00 to 2:00, shredding, prescription drug drop-off, et cetera, is all there. We have the holiday light contest here, sorry, a lot of paper here. Submission forms are due by December 1st, judging will be on December 5th, and awards will be presented by, on December 7th by Mr. and Mrs. Claus, they'll be there. So, that'll be coming up, and if you, we urge everybody who decorates their homes to enter, you never know, you could win and get some bragging rights. Council meeting, and starting in November, is only on one day only, I mean, once a month, it's on the 16th, and December will be once a month, and January will be once a month as scheduled. So, just to give everybody that, the heads up that we're back to that time of the year. The Philomobile will be here on the 22nd of November from 10:00 to 2:00. If you need to use it, make an appointment with Debra here at the clerk's office, and she will handle it and schedule you. Town Hall is going to be closed on Friday, the 10th of November for Veterans Day, and God bless the vets, we love you, and I'm glad we have a holiday just for that. And then we have Thanksgiving, and the Town Hall will be closed on the 23rd and the 24th. And let's see, fill my notes. And that's all I've got, Mayor.
Okay, great. Thanks for those updates, Gary. Hey, David, would you like to go next? All right, thank you.
Sure, sure, thank you. All right, folks, I'm sorry that I'm not there personally, I would love to be, I had to take care of some things with the recent passing of my mother, so, appreciate all the cards that I got in the mail and all the text messages, thank you very much. It really touches, it touches my soul that there's so many people that reach out and care. You know, past few months, I guess maybe late last year I began, maybe in January I began this, I give a Law and Order report, reporting on the traffic citations and the number of citations, and how many are speeding. And I've been looking at these numbers lately, and it seems that the large number, the substantial number of the citations that we're getting are on Griffin Road or on US-27. And I'm going to see, I want to ask if administration can work with Davie Police to focus more on the interior roads. I know some of the roads, they sometimes get people on Sheridan, on Sterling, on Sterling or 172nd, but I'd like to see more of an emphasis on the interior roads, more of a police presence in our neighborhoods instead of the external road. Yeah, the numbers look great getting all these citations, but you know, it's the internal roads where our neighbors are complaining, and that's where I believe that administration should work with Davie Police and try to focus more on these interior roads. I also want to keep thanking Debbie, Mary Ann, and Richard for your work on the zero waste. Yeah, not everybody knows everything, but if you keep getting the word out, I see a post at least once a day coming up, and I'm very happy to see that. It's really, really warming to see that people are, we're making an effort, we're making an effort, we're not going to give up. So, yeah, the speeding and the zero waste, that wraps it up for me. Thank you, everybody, thank you.
Great, thank you, David. Appreciate that. All right. Bob, next.
Yep, yep. Just a couple of quick things. Gary mentioned the Roca Halloween party this coming Saturday at 6:00. It's a blast. If you have little kids, bring them on out. We're bringing our grandson out for the first time. He's one-year-old, it's going to be a whirlwind for him, he probably won't understand 90 percent of what's going on in front of him, but it's going to be fun. It's mostly about little kids. We do costume contests as well, and I think there's about five categories of costume contests, starting out with kids that are this big, and it's a blast. Probably the littlest kids, 30, 40 of them show up with their costumes on for the contest, and there sometimes is 20 or 30 adults that also want to compete for who's got the best contact, excuse me, costume, thank you, it's been a long day. But I'd encourage you to come on out, it's a great time, we take pictures of everything going on, so we'll post those on the internet, and they're free to download, so I'd encourage everybody with kids to come on out, it's a blast. That's number one. David, great minds think alike. I've been talking to Andy about our tickets, our speeding tickets as well, and I've noticed the same, the same pattern, Griffin Road and US-27, we really need the protection throughout town, not just on the end, the perimeter of town. I've also been asking Andy to have them start looking at some of these intersections where stop signs appear to be optional, particularly on Griffin Road, because I see people blow through the stop sign, they don't even slow down, particularly over on 185. So, we've, we've got to deal with this, so we're, keep hammering Andy. I promise to.
All right. I also wanted to say thank you for Debbie and Richard's efforts on zero waste. It's becoming a bigger and bigger topic across the county. Everywhere I go now, any kind of public events, I start asking people if they're aware, and it's shocking how many people are completely unaware. You know, the first question is, are you worried they're trying to build an incinerator in Broward? No, where? Oh, okay, over by the county garbage dump over on 27, really, is the next answer. Do you read the town newsletters? No. Well, there's lots of articles in there, but I'd be happy to tell you all about it. So, as Debbie was saying, try to get the word out every way you can, because we don't want this in our lifestyle. And as Debbie said, this is old technology, it's not the right way to go. I think that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
All right, great, thank you, Bob. Jim?
I've got about 45 minutes in, huh?
Well, that's what we were saving all ours for, you know, give you the time.
All right. One other thing about the Halloween, the road in front of the barn, the big circular road, is where the cars pull off, face the trunk of the cars towards the street and give out candy. I do believe they're going to close that down at 6:00, if I'm not correct, okay? I know it says it starts at 6:00, but that's when the kids will start walking, they're going to close that down for the safety of the kids, so get there early, set your table up behind your car, and we'll be ready to go. Lastly, I want to say thank you to Ms. Debbie and Mr. Richard for the solid waste. We attended a conference, or I guess whatever Sephora, and whatever you want to call it, at the Broward Performing Arts Center. There were approximately 120 people there. This was Dade, Broward, Palm Beach, and Monroe County, all working on the same problems, solid waste. There were a lot of ideas thrown back and forth, but I think it was a great conference, and I do want to say thank you to Debbie again and to Richard for attending, it was a good time, and thank you for your efforts.
Wow, wow, we are just...
about our, our tickets, our speeding tickets as well, and I've noticed the same, the same pattern. Griffin Road and US 27, we really need the protection throughout town, not just on the end, the, the perimeter of town. I've also been asking Andy to have them start looking at some of these, these intersections where stop signs appear to be optional, particularly on Griffin Road, because I see people blow through the stop sign, they don't even slow down, particularly over on 185. So we've, we've got to deal with this. So we're, keep hammering Andy.
I promise to.
All right. I also wanted to say thank you for Debbie and Richard's efforts on zero waste. It's becoming a bigger and bigger topic across the county. Everywhere I go now, any kind of public events, I start asking people if they're aware and it's shocking how many people are completely unaware. You know, the first question is, are you worried they're trying to build an incinerator in Broward? No, where? Oh, okay, over by the county garbage dump over on 27, really is the next answer. Do you read the town newsletters? No. Well, there's lots of articles in there, but I'd be happy to tell you all about it. So as Debbie was saying, try to get the word out every way you can because we don't want this in our lifestyle. And I, as Debbie said, this is old technology. It's not the right way to go. I think that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you, Bob. Jim?
I've got about 45 minutes in, huh?
Well, that's what we were saving all ours for, you know? Give you the time.
All right. One other thing about the Halloween, the road in front of the barn, the big circular road, is where the cars pull off, face the trunk of the cars towards the street and give out candy. I do believe they're going to close that down at 6:00 if I'm not correct. Okay. I know that it says it starts at 6:00, but that's when the kids will start walking. They're going to close that down for the safety of the kids. So get there early, set your table up behind your car, and we'll be ready to go. Lastly, I want to say thank you to Ms. Debbie and Mr. Richard for the solid waste. We attended a conference or I guess whatever, Sephora and whatever you want to call it, at the Broward Performing Arts Center. There were approximately 120 people there. This was Dade, Broward, Palm Beach, and Monroe County, all working on the same problems, solid waste. There were a lot of ideas thrown back and forth, but I think it was a great conference and I do want to say thank you to Debbie again and to Richard for attending. It was a good time and thank you for your efforts.
Wow. Wow, we are just rocketing through. Awesome. All right. And I actually, many things have already been covered, so I really wanted to add just one more thing. And Andy and I had the pleasure this, this past week of meeting with a representative from the South Florida Wildlife Center. And if you're not aware of them, they are downtown and they take care of a wide variety of animals, a lot of large animals, but a lot of native animals. And, and they've been there for a very long time. However, Broward County has other designs for their property. And so their days are numbered and they are looking for potentially a new, well, they're looking for a new home. And so we came out here to, they came out here to kind of talk through a few things. And I just wanted council and residents to be up to date. Absolutely no, this was just a preliminary meeting. It was one, you know, 30-minute meeting. So obviously, nothing of substance was accomplished, but we did have a good dialogue. And, and the, the particular property that was an interesting potential fit is the Broward School Board property there on Sheridan, because they also do a lot of educational type of events. Matter of fact, that's primarily what they do, is educational. And the school board, you know, has that property. They've been very hesitant to get rid of that property because there's a deed restriction that it can only be educational and they don't want a charter school to go in there. And so, so this could be a great fit. I, I personally would be very excited if it, if it got together because I think it is, from a youth standpoint, it could be an incredible fit for our town and could be, in a, in a crisis-type situation, it could be awesome to have them right by for an animal that's in distress. So, so anyway, very preliminary, but I just wanted, you know, just transparency. I wanted everybody to be aware. I didn't want to, you know, kind of like, oh, how long has this been going on? So it was, it was a meeting, to be honest with you, that they requested and I didn't expect it to go anywhere. It was more of a polite, yes, we'll meet, we'll talk. But the more we talked, I'll be honest with you, I got pretty excited about the potential that we do have, you know, we've, we've walked the first mile of a, of a 100-mile road, but, but we did walk the first mile, so.
Were they talking about the entire 32 acres or a portion?
Probably, no, no. Actually, that was an interesting thing. We asked them how much space they, they would be looking for and it's about five acres.
Okay.
So, so yeah, and which, you know, I mean, there was a lot of things that just kind of fit in because as we know, there's some serious wetlands issues out there. But it's very possible that there are five acres that is viable there. This could be a great way for the school board to get some value out of it. Certainly would be a great way for us to add value in a town. And who knows, maybe with some development out there, we could get some credits for the wetlands as well.
Yeah.
So it could be a win-win-win-win-win-win.
Sounds good.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would, I would absolutely be thrilled for this. Just to let you know, I would be thrilled. It's a, it's a charity that I support.
Oh, awesome. Very good. Yeah, well, there certainly is a great organization. And we came out of it and I know, Andy, I was pretty excited at the end of it. And so I'm going to be, I'm going to be hounding him about how are we doing on, on some odds and ends for it. And I wel, and I welcome the rest of the council to do the hounding as well. So, all right. And that's all I have. So, legal comments?
Thanks, Mayor. No legal comments.
All right, great. Thanks. Having, good to have you here with us, Richard. Thank you. All right. Administrative comments?
I had nothing, but now I do.
All right.
So I, I've reached out to Broward County on the issue on the Wildlife Center. Haven't gotten anything back from them yet. So I, but I'm trying to engage them to get some feedback from there. The other is, I'll just say that I heard Councilmember Hartman and Kaczynski talking about police presence and enforcement on interior roadways. Just want to let you know that I've already initiated that with the past and now present road patrol captains for Davie Police and I will continue to do so. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Andy. All right. Item number nine.
This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, relating to the installation of water and sewer lines within the town's right-of-way, requiring utility providers to seek town consent before working into the town's right-of-way, requiring utility providers to abide by the town's conditions of approval prior to initiating any work, establishing a baseline, establishing baseline requirements for approval, requiring a property owner to obtain permit from the town if, if they are bringing water and/or sewer to their property, requiring a property owner to specifically acknowledge as part of the permit that the public utility cannot be activated unless the town's permit has been approved and finalled, requiring any contractor to certify that the public utility cannot be activated until the town's permit has been approved and finalled. Enabling property owners to recuperate their investment for extension of water and/or sewer lines, providing for penalty, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification in the town's code, and providing for an effective date. First reading was approved October 12th.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? We have a second motion?
Second.
What does that mean?
I'll talk louder.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any council discussion on the item? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on the item? Seeing none, if we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
His audio is dead. You don't have a problem there.
Yep. There we go. How's that? Can you hear us?
Yes, I do.
Awesome. Okay. Did you hear the item that we're voting on?
No.
Okay.
Would you like me to reread it?
I think I would like for you to reread it.
Thank you. This is a second reading. An actual second reading.
A second reading of the second reading.
Third reading, yeah.
This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, relating to the installation of water and sewer lines within the town's right-of-way, requiring utility providers to seek town consent before working in the town's right-of-way, requiring utility providers to abide by the town's conditions of approval prior to initiating any work, establishing baseline requirements for approval, requiring a property owner to obtain a permit from the town if they are bringing water and/or sewer to their property, requiring a property owner to specifically acknowledge as part of the permit that the public utility cannot be activated unless the town's permit has been approved and finalled, requiring any contractor to certify that the public utility cannot be activated until the town's permit has been approved and finalled, enabling property owners to recuperate their investment for the extension of water and/or sewer lines, providing for penalty, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification in the town's code, and providing for an effective date.
Great, thank you. David, do you have any comments on that item?
Nope. I, I voted for it. I'm going to vote again.
Okay, well, it's your turn to vote.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right. Item number 10, please.
Item 10 is a first reading ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending section 085-070 of the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code of ordinances pertaining to maximum allowable fill elevations and the removal of illegal fill, providing for penalties, providing for inclusion in the town's code, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, but I do have some caveats that I'd like to throw, put in here.
Okay.
Some discussion.
Perfect. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. As you all know, I brought this forward months ago and we've been working on it. Item G, which is the illegal fill prohibited, I'll read it. It's, it's, it's a quick read. No person shall bring in illegal fill into the portion of the lot. Failure of any person to remove such illegal fill within 48 hours after receipt of notice of violation shall constitute a violation of this article. Two things. I'm wondering, A, is the 48 hours too short? Maybe we need to go 72 hours, something like that. Or B, and the other item is, should we eliminate a level one from this and just make this the penalty for a level two or three? Okay, I got, I don't want to penalize a homeowner that didn't know any better and brought in enough to make a garden or something like that.
Yeah.
You know, but the person that's bringing in the level two and three, that requires a topo, that requires a lot of things. And, and I kind of see that as more, as a more serious violation than one dump truck load of sand or something like that, you know, something to that effect. So I kind of wanted to make, you know, what you guys thought about that in terms of modifying that.
Well, I caught the same thing when I read it. I mean, I thought 42 hours to remediate the problem is way too fast. I mean, I'd give them a week. Two days is just too short to me.
Okay. So you'd rather go, you'd rather go from 48 to, to seven days?
Seven days, five days, something a little more reasonable than two.
Five business days or something?
Yeah, five business days. Makes sense.
That's, I'm fine with that. You know, just as long as it's in there that they've got to remove it.
Right.
You know, is, is the key. And the, the, the part that also needs to be in there is that level one is exempt from that. I'd like to see level one exempt from that penalty.
Yeah, I think that's a great catch. I agree with that 100%.
Mayor, I'm, I'm in total agreement. I do have a question. And I, I know I spoke to Rod a couple of times. How do we know if it's a level one? Once they've spread that out across the property, how would you know that it's a level one? I mean, I'm all for level one.
It's what they come in for. It's the permit that they, they-
I mean, they don't come in. They get the fill, they knock it down.
That's a different situation.
Exactly. How do you tell if it's a level one or a level two? I mean, that's difficult. And that would be up to Rod to determine that. You know, it'd be a judgment call on his part.
The, the other, the other side of that equation, which would probably be equally as difficult to say, show me an invoice.
Yes.
Or a receipt. And, and we know that a lot of fill is brought in as on a cash basis with no, the only paperwork is, you know, Uncle Sam's.
Right.
Currency, you know, as far as, so that, there are some problems with that also.
We don't want to, I don't want to penalize those that don't know, that bring in a load, like you said, trying to build a garden, fill a hole in the ground and so. But we do have those that take advantage of that.
Right.
As a level one and then do a level two, three, or four. How would we tell? I mean, if we can tell, that'd be great.
The only thing, the only thing that I could think of is, is putting it on the shoulders of code enforcement and, and the engineering. I don't think any of us are qualified for anything like that. And they're more qualified because they see it all the time, you know, if more than, because we've had so many situations where people get a level one and they bring in three, four truckloads.
Right.
And you don't, you don't know it unless you're sitting here videotaping or watching the, the loads come in, you know?
Right.
Something like that, especially if they're spreading it as it goes.
Yep.
You know, so.
What's the quantity on a level one again? I forget.
Eighteen, it's two, depending on the size of the property.
Right.
Normal home sites like that we have, it's two 18 cubic yard.
Okay.
Truckloads.
Good.
So, that's right. Is Julio, is that correct? Did I get, Rod, did I get that right? Okay, yeah. So, but then, and then after five acres, I think it goes up another two, another truckload or something like that, after five acres or 10 acres or something like that.
It does. I don't remember exactly.
Yeah, there's a chart. There's a chart we have on that, you know. But anyway, I'd like to make the level one exempt. I don't think there's any way we can solve that problem, to be real honest with you, other than a judgment call.
Yeah, judgment call because, I mean, two loads of fill, two dump trucks worth of fill looks a lot different than five.
Yeah, it's hardly anything.
Come watch at my house. I'm about to go through this exercise.
Yeah, but yeah, a couple of loads of fill is like nothing.
Right.
You know, if it's spread out. I mean, you don't, it's, you know, that much. Five, six loads? Well, yeah, it's a little different story.
Yeah, you got a foot in the same space.
Yeah, I just found out that there's two sets of eyes that go out. I didn't realize that. Rod and Julio both attend to see that, you know, what was taking place. I didn't realize that both were out there, right? You know. But still, it's a judgment call and it'd be tough, you know, it'd be tough.
Well, they would, they're the experts.
Yeah.
So let me just make sure that we're all on the same page. And what I've heard was that there were two modifications to this. One is the 48 hours would go to seven days. Second one is that this would-
Five business, I believe it was five business days.
Five business days?
Yeah.
Okay, five business days. And, and then the second one is that this would not apply to a level one permit?
Yes.
David, did you catch that? Are you?
I agree.
You agree?
I agree 100%. I was, I was concerned about it myself. And I actually spoke to my drainage board appointee to address this. So he was all prepared to address this tonight. So, thank you, thank you. I do support the five business days and exempting level one.
Perfect.
Good.
Just to be clear, it's all within G, section G.
Right. Okay, good.
Correct.
All right. So then if you can amend your motion?
Yeah, I amend my motion with the following, five business days and exempting level one permit.
Okay. And the second? Okay, so we, we have a-
Yeah. Whoever seconded.
Yeah.
I had seconded motioned and all that, right?
And this is the first reading, so we-
It is, right.
There may be more later.
Right. Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? We do.
Ed Gonzalez, Holatay Trail, but I'm also on the drainage board. And that's exactly what we on the board thought we were getting, exempt level one. So I'm glad to see you guys are talking about it. I don't think we want to be heavy-handed. I think we try to work with our citizens and the more we can do to help them, the better. So thank you for making that change.
Great. Thank you, Ed. Seeing no other public comment, public comment, there is additional public comment, sorry.
Good evening. John Garrati, 162nd Avenue. When I was reading the fill ordinance that we're talking about now, is that me or?
No, no, it's not you.
Oh, okay. It said on there, and I wanted to clarify because a lot of people get in trouble for fill. It's like the number one code complaint you get. It said something about removal. So I didn't know, so I wanted to ask what, how, because it said that the town would come in and remove it. How do you do that? Like, you just come in with trucks and take it off their property? But maybe I'm misreading it. That's, that's what I saw that I wanted to know what that meant.
Okay.
Or the homeowner has to do it by rule of like, hey, you overfilled or you did something wrong. That's just what I wanted to clarify. Thanks.
You want to jump in there?
Yeah. I, I'm assuming he's talking about item H.
Right, yes.
Would come in.
Correct.
That's if, if the town can contract with a contractor to remove the fill if the property owner fails to do so.
In a year. That's the key part.
Within a year.
Exactly. That's the point I want to, yeah, it's not, it's not the 48 hours or the, or the five business days that we're talking about there. That's, that's the notification that you're in violation, but it's a year later. If they have not done it on their own, then yes, the town will come in and do it. And then the president will be charged for it.
So that's, that's it in a nutshell.
That's it.
Yeah.
Good. All right. Any other council?
One quick question. Richard, can the town do that? Can the town go in on property and do that?
Absolutely. It's akin to, you know, pools or other concerns where, or grass, when the town goes in and cuts the grass, it's akin to that. We're abating the violation.
Thank you.
But we're giving them 12 months.
Okay.
One other thing I want to mention before we go call a question is, we've also defined illegal fill further up in the ordinance to be a pervious material. So a non-pervious material cannot be used, you know, stone, certain types of stone that are too tightly packed. And then we've even had cases where people have spread concrete.
Yeah.
Cement on it to, to harden it, stuff like that. So there's no drainage where there whatsoever. So just want to point that out. It's, it's part of the, the ordinance.
Great, thank you. Any other comments?
Call a question.
Please call a question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes. All right. Item number 11.
This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, entering into an agreement with the- entering into an agreement with the Broward County Supervisor of Elections for Municipal Election Services, authorizing the mayor and a town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
We have a motion.
Want to approve? Second, whatever.
In a second. Jim had the motion. Gary had the second. And this is basically a housekeeping that we have an agreement that we will let Broward County handle our elections for us. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any council comment on this item?
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Andy, have you, you've gone through this? I mean, is, I'm assuming that there's no difference between the agreement we have in place today, or are they changing the agreement?
There are no changes, it's just, this is putting in place for the upcoming election next year, that's all.
Perfect, good, thank you.
Okay, please call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski? I mean Jablonsky?
Yeah, both of us.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great, thank you. All right, the next item is a discussion item that came up. It's an item that is budgetary and was brought to our attention, and Barbara Herrera from WM is here to give us an update on that.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Barbara Herrera, I'm with Waste Management, WM, as you know, and I'm also your garbage lady. So thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to come before you this evening. Before I start, I want to say that, yes, Vice Mayor Albritton, I saw you at the conference on Friday, for the, it was a recycling conference put on by the South Florida Planning Council. It was quite fascinating certainly to see the, the perspectives of the three different counties, so. Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm here tonight a little bit with my, and I don't want to be too over the top with cliches, but with a hat in my hand, falling a little bit on the sword. And the reason why is I am here tonight to ask for the town's approval for the disposal and processing adjustment component of the rates. And the reason I am here to ask for that this evening is that, as per the contract that the Town of Southwest Ranches has with WM, we need to provide notice to the town, as per the contract, for the collection component and the disposal and processing components. The contract is written in such a way that the collection component adjustment, which happens every year, that notice has to get to the town before June first of every year, during the month of May, which we sent it during the month of May. But the adjustment to the disposal component has to be noticed to the town before July first. So your disposal comes to our facility in Ruder, the Ruder facility. And our facility adjusts in September. So September comes along and I learn that, oh, here's the disposal adjustment for the Town of Southwest Ranches. And it was an oversight on our part because we did not meet the notice requirement for July first for that disposal component. And while the pricing managers, they all take great care in making sure that the numbers are correct, ultimately, Southwest Ranches is my contract and it was my oversight. And I sincerely want to apologize for taking up your time this evening with making this request. But should you approve this request, and I certainly hope you do, it would help to level set. And what that means is that the disposal did adjust, it would help level set the rate, it would prevent a shortfall for us, WM. And I'm here to answer additional questions, of course, that you have. But what does it, what does this mean? What is it that we are presenting here tonight? So in May, we presented the rates with the adjustment to the collection part, the collection component. In September, I met with the Assistant Town Manager, Mr. Muniz, and I presented the adjustment for the disposal and the processing of recycling. It comes out to a dollar sixty-six cents per home per month. It's a dollar sixty-six cents difference between what we requested in May to what we're requesting now. And that dollar sixty-six helps us cover the disposal changes. What does that mean for the town overall? Well, per home is a dollar sixty-six, and WM, because it is our mistake, we certainly are not going to back bill the town. Instead of billing for twelve months, we would bill for eleven months. And this would be an impact of eighteen dollars and twenty-six cents per home over the course of eleven months, or an additional cost to the town per month of four thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-six cents. And I put a spreadsheet there behind, that you have before you. That's my handy mathematical work there. So again, it's embarrassing that I'm here this evening because we are very meticulous, but I certainly appreciate you considering this request, helping us prevent this shortfall and level setting, level selling the rates for, for the rest of the year. If you have any questions, of course, I'd be happy to answer.
I've got a few.
Yeah, go ahead.
You want to go first?
No, go ahead.
All right. A, how do we prevent this from happening in the future?
That's a great question, Councilmember, which.
I have multiple questions, but that's the first one. Go ahead, go ahead if you want to answer that.
So please know that the, the town manager has already asked that question. So I have had a meeting with, with several of the pricing managers, and we very clearly intend moving forward to, instead of giving the city, pardon me, the town, two separate notices on a yearly basis, we're only going to do one in May. So that way, there is no further mistake. Despite the fact that the facility's disposal rates adjusts in a different month, it's our own facility. So we're going to know more or less what it's going to adjust to, and we're going to notice the town in May instead of giving one notice for collection and another notice for disposal. Because this was our first time, this is not an excuse, of course, but it was our first time and we just got it wrong. And for that, we apologize. But moving forward, we're going to do one notice.
All right, just working the numbers, you're, you're basically asking us to rectify an error on your company's part, not you personally, please don't misunderstand, but on your company's part, for about fifty-three thousand dollars. So the number is not really a dollar sixty-six, it's, when you break it down that small, it's, it's actually a fairly sizable number at, at fifty-three thousand. That's a very large budget adjustment that we would have to make, that we wouldn't have had to make.
Right.
I, I have no problem paying some of it, but I do have a problem paying all of it, especially since it's not our mistake. People make mistakes, that's, all of us up here do it, okay? And I really don't blame anybody for it, but I do kind of expect them to pay for it if there's monetary, you know, if it's a monetary issue involved. I would think a fairly good compromise on this would be to start this on January one. It's two months from now approximately, as opposed to what I'm looking at right now and which is up on the screen. Right now, I don't know how the rest of you feel about that, but I would knock it down to, it's like a twenty percent discount off of that. In other words, there's, there's got to be some remind, thank you, penalty reminder not to, that this better not hap, this should not happen again because they're going to hold us accountable for it on your part, is what I'm driving at, you know, and something like that. I would, I would be amenable to something like that. I don't know about the rest of you. You, you may want to be more, more draconian than I am at the moment, or less, I don't know. But I would think that January one would be a, a good starting point for that, and we can take it out of our reserves, you know, for something like that.
I don't know.
What are your thoughts?
What are your thoughts, gentlemen?
All right, real quick, I, I do have, we may not pay this now, okay, because it was a mistake, but I do believe that when the next bill comes through next year, it'll be on there. So I, I'm not sure that I want to punish them in a sense for making a mistake. I know that's a lot of money, but we're going to pay it next year anyhow. So do we push it down the road or do we pay it now? That's just my feelings.
Yeah, I have a, I have a similar question. We're talking about fifty-three, one sixty this year.
May, may I address that?
Sure, sure.
Thank you. That is for twelve months, the total I have, and the manager can correct me if I'm wrong, it's forty-eight thousand seven forty and fifty-six cents. Right, forty thousand seven forty and fifty, and fifty-six cents for eleven months, that's correct, sir. Again, I, I know it's, it's, it's not peanuts.
Right.
But it's not the fifty-three thousand.
So we miss the ability to put this on the trip notices by it being late? And whether it's fifty-three or forty-eight next year, that's in addition to what we're going to pay you now. So we're, we can expect to be going up about fifty thousand a year? This is a, this is a cost of living adjustment for the company, right?
No, sir, this is a disposal adjustment, as well as the processing adjustment.
So, so what's the adjustment based on then?
It's based on CPI.
Consumer Price Index?
Consumer Price Index, however.
Okay, so I said COLA.
Correct.
Same idea, though.
Correct.
So we can expect this to be going up similarly annually, so.
Yes, sir.
To our residents, this will appear to be about a ten or eleven percent increase between last year and next year. They're going to get hit with quite a whopper next year of an increase.
I would have to do the calculations between last year and this year, but the collection can only increase, collection component can only increase by six percent.
Which is cost of living right now.
Right, right, right. And we, we went ahead and matched the disposal component as well for that, yes. So it was a six percent.
It's a lot of money for over two years.
I mean, that's, that was part of the contract we signed, right? Yeah, yeah. I.
But it would be six percent per year if.
No, I get what you're saying. Yeah, yeah, I get what you're saying, for sure. It's absolutely true. I don't know, I.
I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead, David.
Same, Madam.
Hi, Andy. Why do we hold residence funds in the solid waste truck fund?
Are, are you talking about the, the solid waste reserves?
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we do maintain a balance there because we may be confronted with emergency conditions, hurricane or other disaster, where, where we need funds readily available prior to, let's say, accessing our line of credit if we don't need to do that. So we do maintain a.
Those reserves actually are residence money, right?
It's, it's residence money, yes, it is.
All right, well, that, that answers my question. I'm, I'm leaning toward the concerns that Jim expressed. That's kind of the way I'm leaning on the.
Say that again, David.
I'm leaning towards, my concerns are, are the same as what Jim has, that if we don't handle something now, they're going to double hit us next year, is what my fear is.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's the way the contract, you know, it's, they're, they're due the money, it's just when. So, and, and I guess, I guess my feeling, a couple of thoughts is, one is, they did forego the one month, so there is a penalty involved already. And the second thing is, if we remember where we were twelve, eighteen months ago, and, and the difference in the service, I think we found a good partner to partner with, and they made an honest mistake, and, and I'm comfortable with that one month penalty moving forward, that's just my, my.
I'm more comfortable with a three-month penalty.
I know, I know. But I will end up paying the extra couple of months anyway.
And I, and I don't think we'll pay for it more next year. I don't think it'll be added on next year because it's a much smaller amount.
It should be coming down. Cost of living is not going up six percent this year.
No, but I'm just saying the, if, if, if the three months that I'm proposing won't be added on next year because it's, it's a small number. But it's just enough to make it painful. Not painful, 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 but, you know.
Mayor, would this be paid out of the reserves?
Yes, that's where it would come from.
How much money is there in the reserves?
Yeah, Mayor.
Emile, do you know what they?
I, I did ask a bill the other day, so the, the solid waste reserve is currently eight hundred and sixty-two thousand.
Just, just for clarity, that is as of September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Those are audited numbers.
Okay.
I like the three-month idea.
Yeah, I don't. They've been a good partner, they've been a good partner. It was, it was, if, if it was, if it was a group that, I'm sorry, go ahead, David.
I, I, I agree with what you're, with your, way you're taking it, way you're taking it.
Yeah, yeah. If, if this was, if, if it was, if there was any sort of thought that they were trying to get away with something, or that there was something underhanded going on it, I'd be all over it, Gary, I'd be with you a hundred percent. But it was an honest mistake from a business partner that's always been good to us. I feel comfortable saying it's not going to happen again, and.
If it does next year, it'll be six months. If Gary's one or Steven.
Respectfully, sir, if it, if it happens, it's not going to happen, so long as I manage this contract, it's not going to happen again, certainly.
Thank you for your commitment.
A hundred percent, that's my commitment. And assuming that I get sick or something while the pricing is done and it happens again, we're not going to come before you, it's just not going to happen, for fear of tomatoes being thrown and other objects. But, you know, all kidding aside, this is a hard ask.
Yeah.
And I really am grateful for your comments and for your support as our partners. Thank you for recognizing that, and, and yes, absolutely. And I'm happy to, you know, if you have any further questions and you want more details, I'm happy to, to respond to that as well.
Okay. Let me open it up to the public. Any public comment on this item?
At your office, Helfer? Noah Hollisworth, one hundred and ninety-ninth Avenue. I want two things added from them. Number one, I want to guarantee from them that they're going to clean up the bulk on every street in our town when they pick it up. Because I've complained to Waste Management, I've complained to the town, I've given up. And this week, if you go down one hundred and ninety-ninth, you'll see my neighbor who's across the street, two houses down on the west side. He put out coconut palm and about five hundred coconuts. He left a hundred of them in the street, scattered all over, across the street on the east side, the west side, all over the road, and palm fronds scattered up and down the road. Every place he picked up on one hundred and ninety-ninth, people had to go out and rake it up, clean up their mess. Remember I used to tell you when Waste Pro, when they crashed a truck, the one thing to take off was the brand-new rake that came with the truck when it was new? Well, this is Waste Management now. I want to guarantee from them, they're going to clean up with a rake every property for the rest of their term this year, at least. Because what we have now is an earn while you learn people. And they came here when they wanted the contract. Oh, our people are trained. That's one. Number two, I want them to become a partner with us to develop solid waste, zero waste, and not just to give lip service to us. They manage, Waste Management, Waste manages a lot of recycling centers across the United States. They can tell us approximately how much and how intense Waste Management can do zero waste. And I want them to become a partner.[1714.83] I don't want them to give us a little bit of lip service because it isn't profitable for them at this moment. I want them to help us. And I want this council to put their feet to the fire. You have the opportunity right now. Those two items. One, clean up your mess when you make it. And number two, help us with zero waste. As to the costs and what it's going, how much property it's going to take, how long it's going to do, and what would be the phase in? So, we get those zero wastes, because you don't get the zero waste overnight.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Noel.
Jim Malaski, 5780 Southwest 188th Avenue. WM, as of yesterday, killed it in earnings. They are making so much money by becoming so efficient, the analysts are all over it. They got a multiple that's making the tech stocks look stupid. And just tonight, there was an interview on Mad Money, Jim Cramer. And last night, there was an interview from another company about Waste Management. I've been telling you, the things that they collect and recycle got a lot of value to them. For instance, that landfill gas, the methane, they turned it into natural gas. And you also got to think of the idea that that gas, if it gets stored anywhere, it's going to be stored regionally, so in case there's an emergency, you could run a hospital because that's what they use. They use a dual fuel method, diesel fuel and natural gas to extend the running life of a generator in a hospital setting because of the requirements. So, there's a lot of ways, the plastic scrap and being turned into all those different resins, all that is producing extra profit from our waste. So, the profit, the partnership idea makes a lot of sense to me, anyway. And also, the partnering aspect of going with us to fight this incinerator idea makes the incinerator sales guys look stupid, quite honestly. Why would they want to burn what they could turn into revenue and then be environmentally okay? Yeah, we can go as far as we want to with zero waste, but it's still going to be a struggle. This is instant, this is now, and, you know, from financial standpoint, even the zero waste could look a little bad. You know, there's something like 20 or 30 landfills in Florida and only about 22 are qualified for the credits from the federal government, which is something their president was talking about on the interview last night. Those aren't valued, I don't think, fully yet because it has something to do with the federal government and the alternative minimum fuel is taking the methane and turning it into the natural gas. So, when we know that more, we'll know the real value, I believe, of that process that they've got. But right now, it's pretty damn nice to at least get the partnership rolling.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. Barbara, I will say, just from my personal experience, and I put debris bulk out there every, you know, every other week when the pickups are my, personally, I'm not saying this is true all across town, but it's done exceptionally well. One point along that same line, though, is I would like greater direction on coconuts because they are, I've heard where you're supposed to, I always put them in a bag because the guy told me to put them in a bag. And then I've heard others say where you don't, if we put them in a bag, you're not going to pick them up. They always pick up mine in a bag, I don't know. But I don't really know what the direction is there, but maybe that's part of the issue here. But, you know, certainly, I would appreciate that. I will say, 100%, I would like to meet with you as far as the zero waste and partnering to see how we can leverage WM. I think your business model is a little different than that. And I'm wondering how far we can work together to leverage that. Privileged to be on the executive committee for that. And I would love to be able to take to that executive committee an alternative to the incinerator that is very heavy on the recycle side so that we can meet our obligations. And so, Noel, I appreciate you bringing that up. And this is the perfect opportunity to do that. And I'd like to get with you sooner rather than later to talk about that.
Can I just jump in on that?
Sure.
Actually, Russell and I asked Barbara to bring us some of the Waste Management people to talk exactly about this. And she's been working with Russell on putting that plan and that program together. So, we started that in August.
Okay. And where are we on that?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, may I backtrack a little?
Sure.
As far as the coconuts are concerned, yes, bag the coconuts so that they don't, you know, fall out. I have made a note of 199th Avenue, the issue that the gentleman brought up. Tomorrow, I'm going to send a route manager out there and to make sure that the area is clean and there's no debris on the road.
Great.
Just to make sure that that's clean for 199th Avenue. Yes, I've been working with Councilmember Hartman and Russell on the bringing zero waste or at least partnering with the town toward the town's zero waste goals. We've already had a meeting with the recycling director for WM as well as our communications director and Councilmember Hartman. And the, what we're getting, what we have to figure out is that, you're right, our business model is a little different. Councilmember Hartman, you had asked, how much, how much do we recycle a year and how much do we recycle a month, et cetera? So, I have that information. I'm going to go ahead and send it to you this evening when I get back. It's 545 tons per year. So, in the one year that we have been servicing Southwest Ranches, we have collected 545 tons of recycling, 545 tons of recycling. That's about 45.49 tons per month from Southwest Ranches. Of that recycling, 32.1% is contamination. So, our business model would be, the goal towards zero waste is to try to increase the tonnages for recycling as much as possible, but decrease contamination as much as possible. And then how do we do that? And that's what we would need to discuss with you, Mayor, and of course, with Councilmember Hartman and the rest of the council. How do we do that? Because the more you recycle, that's great. If you send us 800 tons, that's fantastic. But if the contamination is still not where it should be, right? I mean, you know, we're missing an opportunity here, right? So, getting the message across, doing it effectively, doing it in a simple way. You don't want it complex. You want a simple message that would reach as many people as possible. And that's what we're going to discuss. We have a meeting scheduled with Russell on November the 7th, November the 7th. I remember, November the 7th. To, again, it's with several of our team members in WM to basically brainstorm and see what we can do to get that message across. One of the things we were talking about is doing a PSA, a video PSA. Hopefully involve the council and you can put it out there, something short, two minutes, maybe, a minute and a half, that the public can see and understand. Simple, simple recycling, recycle right. And if we can increase the tons and lower the contamination, that can certainly help pave the way toward your zero waste goals. 100%.
Mayor, if I may interrupt for a moment, as you can see, there's...
Yeah, what's going on?
Quite a bit of action going outside. There was a serious car accident. One of the vehicles is fully in flame, fully engulfed in flame.
Oh, wow.
Oh, I can see it.
Yeah, hopefully, it won't be as bad as it looks, but it looks bad. I just want to let you all know what's going on.
Okay, great.
Goodness.
All right. So, I'm not sure we have a full consensus on how to go here. Just being honest.
If the consensus is just to go with one month.
To go with...
With the 48, I'm okay with that.
You're okay with it?
Yeah, I just think that January 1st is a better shot, but...
Yeah, okay.
We are talking, we are talking to people's money.
Yeah.
And was something that we could have easily rectified in July.
Right. Absolutely.
And now we're having to deal with it, you know, when we shouldn't have to.
Right.
That's really my point. But if you guys are, that's what you guys want, that's fine.
Okay. Are we okay with proceeding?
Yep.
Okay. I see nods. Okay. All right, so...
Needing a motion?
Yeah, Mayor, yeah, I'd like, we'd like to get a motion. But let me just clarify, that's what the 11-month total would be is 48,740 dollars and 56 cents.
Correct.
But I'll say, having spoken to Emile this afternoon, because this is coming from reserves, finances preference from an audit standpoint, from a control standpoint, would be to see this go as a single payment as opposed to a monthly additional. And so, I just want to make sure council would be okay with that as part of the consensus that we're seeking from you. And if that's the case, we'll prepare the proper legislation and bring it back before you.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with it.
All right, I'll make a motion that we pay the 48,730 and a lump sum out of the reserves.
Perfect. Perfect.
I need a second.
Second.
Do we have a motion? And so, what we're actually doing is asking you to bring it to us to vote on next time. Is that what we're doing?
That would be perfect. Councilmember Jablonski, is it 48,730? He's still looking for the discount. It was 48,740 and 56 cents, just for the record.
Slow my math.
So, do we need a motion or do you have the direction to do what you need to do?
I'm good with the consensus from you here to prepare it, to bring it before you for an official vote.
Okay, so, we're good. And this was a discussion item, so I think we're lined up. I think we're good.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers.
So, yeah, so that item is settled. So, these meetings with the ILA and all that are ongoing. How quickly will we have sort of a plan together? Is it, do you think it's going to be resolved on November 7th? Is that a final or is there more to come after that?
I don't think it will be resolved November 7th. I think November 7th will be brainstorming for both the town and WM to see how we put together the program that would best serve the town. We have some ideas and then we have to implement that. So, I see this as something ongoing. This is not a one and done.
Okay.
This is something that's ongoing and it would have to be modified as we move forward.
Right.
To make sure that the messaging is as on point and as simple and as effective as possible.
Okay. Okay.
And tomorrow, by the way, there is a solid waste meeting tomorrow of the Solid Waste Authority in Broward County.
Yep, I'll be there. So, we're talking about the town of Southwest Ranches.
Yes.
I am concerned about a plan that I can bring to Broward County. And so, I'm looking for something that's a little bit more inclusive than just, I mean, I want, obviously, I want to improve what we're doing here in the ranches. That's primary. But I also want to be able to start putting a plan out there that is counter to an incinerator. And that means that I'm going to need to pull together a plan that will bring Broward County to the level of 75% recycling without an incinerator. And so, so it's a bigger discussion, I guess. But I would love to see WM be a part of that.
Yes, so would we. Definitely so would we.
Your purpose was just to set an example for the rest of the county on...
Which is awesome. Which is awesome. But now, now that these meetings are underway and plans are going to be starting to put in place, it's time, you know, yeah. All right, I think we're good. Thank you, Barbara, for coming out.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on the motion?
No, we got a consensus. There'll be a motion next time we get together. Yeah. I think it's your moment, though.
Huh?
I think it's your time. Oh, we have minutes?
Don't forget that.
I don't see any minutes on mine.
Right here.
That was added after a late addition?
No.
Send them mine either.
Not on there. All right, we got some minutes? I don't know. I'm in the dark.
Yeah.
Read the minutes, Ms. Clark.
All right, so we have minutes from, we have minutes from September 14th, the budget, first budget hearing, and minutes from September 28th, second budget meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes?